Good evening. I am going to call to order the February 10, 2025, school committee meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording this evening as well as Zoom for purposes of the minutes. And this is the portion of the year where we enter into, we have a public hearing. It's a Mass General Law requirement. So we will enter into the public hearing. We will hear a presentation from the administration, take comments and questions about the proposed FY '26 operating budget, and then adjourn back into the open meeting. So with that, I will make a motion.
I will make a motion to open up a public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are here during our public hearing portion of the FY '26 budget. We are going to hear a presentation of the budget. A lot of this will be something that we have shared in the past, however, thought it was important to share it during this very important meeting. Actually, I'm going to pause. I'm going to recognize Brian Stack and ask him if he wants to call to order. I don't know if he's here yet. He's not here yet, okay. Tina Sherwood?
I literally saw him downstairs.
Oh, okay, so they, the educational subcommittee has their meeting before us. They are going to be joining us.
And, Highness, it's Tina, and I don't have a quorum.
Okay. All right, when he walks in or when he enters, I will ask him to call ACES to order.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll proceed, sorry to pause you on that. Okay.
Thank you, Ness, and thank you to the members of the community who are joining us this evening. Many of you have shown great persistence and resilience throughout budget season. For some of you, this will be the fifth or sixth time hearing some of the slides this evening. But we did think that it is important for those of you joining for the first time that you have some context for our budget proposals and some of the background on how we arrived at these recommendations. And so again, thank you to those of you in the audience who, at this point, can probably recite the slides yourselves. And so I wanted to begin by just sharing a brief overview of our process and timeline. I've made the point at each meeting that a budget season is an iterative process. We begin in the fall by reviewing with our principals and department leaders the budget priorities for FY '26 and take a look at our budgetary needs. This year, my instructions to our leadership team was to aspire to approach level services, understanding that we are bound by what's called the MOU, which is a 3.5% memorandum of understanding with the Town of Hingham. And that will be the cap to our budget increases over the course of the FY '24 to '28 school years. And we'll speak more about that in later slides. Our budget priorities and assumptions were driven by a number of factors. The first of which is our Portrait of a Learner Initiative. Our Portrait of a Learner Initiative attempts to identify the skills and competencies needed by all HPS learners, and this informs our budget decisions. In addition to these skills and competencies, we also want to respond to the fact that we have diverse needs, interests, and future paths, and want to ensure that we have a range of offerings to meet these needs and interests. Also, as part of the Portrait of a Learner, in addition to core content and competencies and skills, we do want to be mindful of some of the soft skills that we are also hoping to make sure that our students are leaving us with when they complete their Hingham Public Schools journey. So we do aspire for our students to be effective communicators, skillful collaborators, creative problem solvers, responsible citizens, and mindful individuals. Any budget is also driven by a strategic plan. Hingham Public Schools is currently in year three of a three-year strategic plan. Many of these strategic objectives will continue into our next round of strategic planning, which will cover the '25 to '28 school years. So our team, after much discussion, did set five main areas of budget priorities. The first, as I mentioned, was to center our Portrait of a Learner Initiative and strategic plan when making budget decisions. The second priority was to continue to strengthen and sustain our tiered systems of supports in both the academic and social-emotional realms. This is also known as our MTSS system, which again stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports, which is how we ensure the success of all of our students. A third realm of budget priorities falls under Student Services and Special Education. We continue to seek to strengthen systems, structures, and programs in the Student Services Department to address the diverse social-emotional, behavioral health, and academic needs. Our fourth priority, and one that is one of the most important drivers for improvement in our district, is professional development. So we want to ensure that we are providing robust, aligned, and relevant professional development to continue to advance the capacity of our educators and to employ best practices. Finally, any school district must ensure to maintain adequate facilities and operations. So we want to make sure that we're providing a safe, welcoming, and well-maintained facility with reliable, high-quality technology. And additionally, we do need to promote efficient financial and HR operations to support the smooth functioning of the district. I mentioned in the introductory slide, one of our major budget assumptions this year relates to something called the MOU with the Town of Hingham, which is a four-year commitment signed in March of 2023 by the School Committee, Select Board Advisory, Superintendent, and Town Manager. And it was designed to maintain cost increases at a specific rate as proposed by the Sustainable Budget Task Force. And that rate was to be capped at 3.5% for FY '25, '26, '27, and '28. The MOU articulated the understanding that due to increased costs in personnel, special education, and energy costs, that this would result in deficits in the FY '25 to '28 school year. I did pull out one specific quote from the MOU, which again highlights the need to prioritize the utilization of available resources, which may leave certain programs and activities funded at lower levels than desired or not funded at all. So under the MOU, the town administrator on the municipal side and the school superintendent on the school department side are responsible for those prioritizations and cuts for, again, both the municipal and school departments respectively. Due to these budget assumptions, which integrated the 3.5% MOU, we did take a zero-based budgeting approach to any of our discretionary line items. These line items would include things like supplies, texts, apps, and other discretionary lines. I will note that last year, we cut deeply into these discretionary lines, so there really wasn't much deeper to go this year. We next took a look at efficiencies, reallocations, and enrollment data. And so when there were opportunities to have an efficiency due to a retirement or a leave, we did look closely at those. We also considered restructuring of roles, reassignment and sharing of staff as needed, and we did take a deep dive into both enrollment and class size analysis. Additionally, this year in particular, we looked very closely at our offsets and opportunities for revenue. And this was a recommendation of the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So we did look deeply at our fees and tuition and did some benchmarking around both of those items. And again, the primary budget assumption that, as we shared with the leadership team, was to aspire to approach level services to the extent possible within the constraints of the MOU, and when possible, to prioritize student-facing positions. Now, in any district, there are key budget drivers, and the first and foremost is to meet contractual obligations. So contractual agreements that recently settled are driving FY '26 salary increases, particularly in Unit A, they range from 3% to 7% when we factor in COLA, STEPS, and Lanes. We also had an increased tuition reimbursement stipend and longevity across many of our units, and increased substitute costs to cover extended leaves. We additionally, as in any of our area school districts, are experiencing increased fuel and utility costs, including Hingham Municipal Light Plant that announced increased rates to 6%. And it is important to note that two of our buildings are in fact heated by electricity. Additionally, across the state and across the country, we are seeing continued need for specialized SEL and behavioral supports. So Hingham is not alone in this trend. And additionally, we are seeing increased needs for other specialized services, most notably speech and language services. We continue to have in our focus out-of-district special education tuitions and services. It's important to note that the rates for these tuitions is set by an outside organization known as the Operational Services Division, who annually provides estimated rates of inflation for approved private special education programs. The increase for FY '26 for these programs has been set at 3.67%. However, individual programs may apply to OSD for what's called program reconstruction, which allows for rate increases many times significantly beyond that 3.67%. Anytime we are talking about teaching and learning and students, we do want to make sure that we're also centering academic data. And so I just have a couple of quick highlights to share. This first slide here, I think, is particularly important because it demonstrates how some of our recent investments in our multi-tiered system of supports have yielded academic gains, particularly coming out of the pandemic. This slide here traces a cohort of students who were in kindergarten during the 2020-21 COVID year. And we can see from this data how our students have rebounded with those academic skills post-pandemic. I will also say that some of our recent investments in a new high-quality literacy program and literacy professional development have also supported these elementary academic gains. At the secondary level, we continue to track MCAS data and note that we are continuing to perform well above the state average in both ELA, math, and science. Another area of focus for our budget planning includes some of our curriculum and instruction initiatives. So as mentioned, MTSS in both the academic and social-emotional realm remain a major area of focus for our attention. We are, in particular, next year, going to focus in on our secondary MTSS to make sure that we're applying that same laser-like focus to the academics and SEL interventions for our secondary students. Next year, we do plan to pilot a new elementary math program. We will continue our support for the Grade 6 to 12 mathematics initiative called Building Thinking Classrooms. And as mentioned earlier, we will be implementing our Portrait of a Learner. And in addition, we do hope in our budget, to the extent possible, to preserve the range of offerings and richness of our elective offerings to meet the diverse needs, interests, and future paths of all of our students. Now, the next batch of slides, which are enrollment slides, actually preceded just by a couple of days a new enrollment study from an organization called NESDEC that landed after we had already generated these slides. So I won't spend too much time on enrollment this evening as part of the budget, because we will be going much deeper with that as we get into our enrollment study later in the evening. But did want to note, as we have noted before, that post-pandemic, we have experienced enrollment decline. However, when we look at the trends broken out by grade level, we can see that our elementary enrollment is in fact stabilizing. However, we do continue to see some enrollment decline at both the middle school and high school. And again, more on that later in the evening when we present the results of the NESDEC enrollment study. This slide here provides a preview of the presentation later in the evening that shows some of the high-level trends with regard to enrollment. So over the next three years, our elementary enrollment is anticipated to increase by roughly 35 students, and over the next 10, by 92 students. The middle school, over the course of the next three years, is anticipated to decrease by six students, but actually recover by the year 2035 with an increase of 63 students. And then finally, the high school, based on the projections, we do anticipate a continued decrease by 95 students over the next three years and 168 over the next 10. In addition to sharing some of the enrollment data, we did think it would be helpful to give a snapshot of how our district compares to other districts with regard to staffing levels. This first slide here compares Hingham staffing levels with our partners around the state. You'll notice that our teaching levels, which reports the number of teachers per 100 students, is in line with our peers across the state. Our paraeducator ratios are higher than the state average. Our leadership team runs lean and is below the state average. Student support services are roughly in line with the state, as is our clerical. In addition to looking at state averages, we often will look at what are called our DESI comparable districts, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. When we are unpacking, whether it's academic data, social-emotional data, or financial data, the state compares us to 10 comparable towns with similar demographics. Looking at these measures, our teachers, again, that FTE ratio per 100 students is roughly on par with our comparable districts. We are slightly higher in terms of our paraeducator ratio. We are lower and leaner in terms of leadership. Student support and clerical are roughly on par with our comparable districts, and our tech support staff is lower than the average for our benchmark districts, our comparable districts. Next up, wanted to take a quick look at class sizes. So wanted to begin by sharing our school committee policy with regard to class sizes. At the elementary level, we currently have a 23-student maximum for grades K to 1 and a 25-maximum for grades 2 to 5. And so this chart here shares some of our average elementary class sizes. It's important to note that we do have some unevenness of cohorts as we travel through the grade levels. So you may see at a given school, four sections of 4th grade one year and three sections the next, based on these uneven cohort sizes. We also took a look at the average class sizes at the middle school and high school. It's important to note that we have a much wider range of class sizes within our core content areas at the high school, with our honors classes tending to have larger number of students and our college prep 1 and 2 tending to have lower numbers. And so you can see here at the middle school and high school, average class sizes in the high teens. We did have a recommendation from a member of the advisory committee to also consider reporting the median class sizes, which I did include this evening as well. So you can see that that results in a slight, slightly higher number based on presenting the median rather than the average. Thank you for that suggestion. In taking a look at our elective class sizes at both the middle school and high school, we again see numbers in the high teens for the most part, with a few smaller numbers depending on the makeup of the class. So some of the elective spaces have a much smaller ratio due to the need for specific equipment for that content area. So the number of pottery wheels that we have will determine the number of students we can host in a ceramics class, for example. And again, did also present that, both in terms of an average class size and also as a median. In terms of special education, wanted to, first of all, begin with some assumptions and priorities for special education. So first and foremost, want to stress that all students are general education students. So our special education students, everything we said about general education encompasses our special education students as well. And so when we speak of strengthening Tier 1 instruction and MTSS, that is for all students. Also, want to just highlight the importance of IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which indicates that all students have the right to a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment. And the IDEA Act also outlines that the IEP, Individualized Education Plan Team, is the one that decides the services needed by a student with special education. Another budget assumption we made with regard to special education is that we are committed to implementing the Special Education Improvement Plan that stemmed from a recent audit that was done of our special education program. So we do hope to strengthen our specialized curriculum and supports, and to strengthen and align our specialized programming. This year, we also took an analysis of our administrative structures in the Student Services Department and looking to make efficient and effective use of our systems and processes. And every year, we do a deep dive into our out-of-district placements and also look closely at our specialized services. Earlier, I mentioned that we did take a dive into our enrollment data. I do think this slide here is particularly interesting because while we have seen declines in our total enrollment across the district, we have in fact seen an increase in special education students, both in terms of the N, the total number of students, and an increase of special education students as a percentage of the total population. So again, while we have seen declines in enrollment when we look at all students, when we look at the special education subgroup, we have seen an increase both in the total number and in the percentage of the total. Our next slide here just shares a snapshot of the current number of students at each school and level who currently are on an IEP or a 504. We do continue to track this data over time. Our next couple of slides give a snapshot into our current rates of out-of-district placement. It's important to note that for most enrollment data, we give a snapshot of October 1, when we're presenting our general education enrollment. However, it's important to note that out-of-district students may come back into the district or go out of district at any point during the school year. So I will always make sure to timestamp any slides that are reporting out-of-district placement, because these numbers are fluid and do change from day to day, week to week, and month to month. The current snapshot for the FY '25 school year, we did, in response to community feedback, break this out into somewhat more granular data, in that we've broken it out by level to give you a sense of the number of students out of district in each grade level band. So at pre-K 5, we currently have five students in out-of-district placement, 6 to 8, 15; 9 to 12, 20; and we have 16 students currently in post-grad programs. The next slide provides our best snapshot of what we project for the FY '26 school year, based on students migrating from grade level to grade level, and also in taking a look at some of the potential programs. That said, it's important to note that individualized education plans are written throughout the spring, and therefore, this number does have some fluidity to it. I'll now pass it off to our business director, Ayesha Opang, to share a bit about how the memorandum of understanding intersects with our special education budget.
Okay, good evening, everyone. In terms of the memorandum of understanding, Superintendent Roberts spoke earlier about the memorandum of understanding in terms of our budget overall being held to 3.5% overall from year to year. Within that memorandum of understanding, there's a specific clause that addresses special education costs, including out-of-district tuition, specialized services, and transportation. For those specific line items, the threshold is a 2% threshold rather than a 3.5% threshold. And that 2%, when that was determined, it was a look back on several years of growth in that area over time. At the time of the MOU, we did see a large spike in terms of out-of-district tuitions, costs, increases. But the hope is that that cost will continue to level out with time. In terms of the memorandum of understanding, it speaks to an Appendix A that outlines the specific account numbers addressed in terms of the out-of-district tuition, as I mentioned before, transportation, and specialized services, and the base financial 24 costs for those specific expenses. Those form the baseline by which the 2% growth rate is calculated from year to year. This Appendix B shows the growth from that base year and the increases in 2% for each year. And those lines form the threshold. When you look at the out-of-district and special education contracts line, it forms a basis for the expenses and any amounts that will be reimbursed by the town. The municipal budget is also included in here, as well as the school budget, at 3.5% as indicated earlier, and what those amounts were based upon. In the first instance, we speak of the out-of-district tuitions. Those same accounts that we mentioned before are outlined here. And what it does is that it looks at out-of-district tuitions, both to mass public schools, which would be other public schools. For example, in the past, we've had students who've attended Situette Public Schools and their program within Situette. Sometimes, there is a summer program associated with that public school as well. Sometimes, where there is a cohort of students that share the same disability within a public school, we may find it helpful for the student to actually attend another we may find it helpful for the, for the student to actually attend another public school where there's a similar program. In the prior year, we had such an instance, um, in the current year, um, we do not. The non-public schools, that line includes both residential tuitions and private day tuitions as well. There's a summer component to that in terms of ESY or other um, 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 summer programs that the students who attend private schools, residential and private day schools also attend. And the tuitions mass public would include any collaboratives that the students attend as well as any, as well as any summer tuitions um, that are associated with that tuition. So for that, we total up the total expenses for all of those tuitions. And then we apply, similar to what the um, MOU prescribes, we apply the grants um, that are applicable to special education. Two of the main grants that are applicable here are ID, the IDA grant and the Circuit Breaker grant. The IDA grant is a federal grant and the Circuit Breaker is a state per grant that comes from um, the state of Massachusetts. And it mostly um, reimburses us for tuitions and transportation. Um, here in Hingham, most of our, this grant, if not all of this grant, is applied to tuitions. The 2426 line here, that line number is a, is a 24 line in terms of that initial number we saw back on earlier slides as the baseline amount. And then we applied a 2% growth rate um, for this year to that amount. And then we are able to come up with what the towns share of that, of that tuition would be. Um, this year, we have a small decrease in that to 555,000 for tuitions. Okay? And most of that reduction in that, in that tuition rate amount is as a result of a few students graduating this year and bringing the overall cost of our tuitions down. Okay? The next line would be um, in terms of our transportation. Um, one of the things that we do in addition to paying for tuitions for our special ed students, we also have to transport them to the various schools where um, they attend. Um, and in some cases, in fact, in most cases, into, we are, we transport our kids internally through our own van, our, our own um, Hingham Public School trans vans or, or small buses or vehicles. Um, but in some cases, we have contracted amounts that we need to um, budget for. Those contracted amounts go out to specific, um, to some um, tran- contracted transportation providers. And then we, just because there are instances where we are not able to transport all of our kids if they are, for example, a one-off, a one-off change that occurs that we are not able to plan for ahead of time. Okay? Um, the same formula applies for these, for the um, the, the, the transportation in terms of looking at our baseline and the 2% hurdle. And those numbers cumulatively, we compare to our costs and the reimbursement amount is the 53,000 for this year. Okay? In terms of our specialized services, um, the question has come out, has, has also come up in terms of what are specialized services? The specialized services here would include um, behavioral services that we um, provide to our students, speech and language contracted services that we provide to our students. And as, as listed here, they're also um, physical, we also provide us, excuse me, our students with physical therapy and other equipment. In some cases, our, our students are not able to um, come to school, whether they have um, they are able to come to school because of maybe um, they may have some health issues at home or other issues and they have to be tutored at, at home. Um, and over time, we've seen an increase in those, the need to provide those services to our students. And that's another area um, that has been carved out as part of the MOU. Um, those three, this, this MOU, the MOU, the reason why the specialized services was also carved out because what we saw at the time the MOU was signed was that although we were seeing improvements in terms of our students educationally and um, in terms of how they had recovered from COVID, as we saw in the earlier slides based on the curriculum, from a behavioral and social emotional perspective, we had not seen the same gains coming out of COVID as we had on the educational side of things. And there was a need to, to budget appropriately because we were not sure at what, to what extent those costs would be increasing. Okay? And here in this slide, we accumulate all of those various um, lines, the tuitions, transportation, and specialized services. And we look at the total amount being the 1.2 million that we, um, as part of the MOU that the town will reimburse us for as part of that MOU again. Yeah? Alright? If you want to speak on, to that side? You go ahead?
Sure.
Okay? In this um, um, budget composition slide here, um, basically, we look at the composition of the um, of our budget. And we see that really, to the largest extent, we really consist of personnel costs. Um, and that more than eighty percent, a little bit more than eighty percent of our budget consists of overhead, of, of, sorry, of personnel costs. And those costs are not, are not costs that we are able to um, in terms of managing the budget, we have personnel, we have contracted costs, and the discretionary line is a small slither of the pie with only 4%. So in terms of putting this budget together, we were trying to make sure that we were being as efficient as possible, where we could reduce or reallocate. We tried to, to see where we could reduce some of those um, supplies, textbooks, and other discretionary lines. And in previous years, we had reduced it to a point where we still had to provide supplies and pencils and pens and crayons so that, so certain programs could be provided. So there wasn't very much room to reduce those areas anymore. As we go through the, the detail of this, of detail, detailed financial information, we had to even bump some of those areas up this year because um, after living through it um, in terms of the, the tight measures that we put in place last year in terms of um, cutting some of those costs, we knew that we still had to provide copy, ink, and other, other area, other, other supplies like that. And we can run a school or schools without those supplies. So because of the impact on, we, and the, the large cuts that we had made in previous years to those discretionary lines, we were left with only the personnel areas as an area where we could reduce some of our costs in order to balance our budgets. Okay? In looking at our budget, um, we also looked at the revenue. The next few slides will address the revenue or where we actually get the funds to provide for um, the educational budget that we provide to our students. Um, a large part of our budget is really provided through the town and through the revenue generated from the town. Um, and based on that M, our MOU that we've spoken so much about today, um, we were allocated 70,383,000. And in terms, trying to balance our budget this year, we made sure that we stuck to that number and we kept to the agreement that was outlined in the MOU. Another area that we use to be able to balance our budget um, is through the use of revolving funds. Um, there are several revolving accounts that we use and we collect fees to help us balance our budget. Um, because um, the, as we mentioned before, the discretionary line or the area is so small in order to maintain the high quality of education that we provide to our students and the services we provide to our students in, internally within our schools, um, we didn't have much room um, for other things. So we wanted to make sure that in terms of, for fees, we looked at fee, the area of fees to make sure that we addressed and made sure that the, the fees that were collected kept in line with some of the costs that we were experiencing. So for example, our building rental, rental fees, this year, we increased it by 3% to make sure that the cost of people using our buildings kept, kept pace with the cost of, for example, custodial staff who would be cleaning up after people use the buildings and other, and other services that are provided within our buildings. In some cases, for example, in, in the case of the athletic fees, when we looked at the cost of providing a well-diverse and very rich athletic program, um, we wanted to make sure that the cost of that program as well was keeping up with some of the, the fees that are being charged. And we did implement a few increases in those um, fees as well during, during this year. We also looked at, um, in line with the athletic fee, we also had um, the middle school and high school activity accounts. Um, for those two accounts, um, we've continued, we also have increase in costs in terms of the teachers and um, services that we provide to students and families. As an example, not only do um, there's, not only does each class have a class advisor throughout the middle school and the high school, I'm right at the high school too, they have class advisors, but there also, there's also a very diverse list of activities and groups and extracurricular activities that our students can participate in. And as far as being able to help us um, help us balance the budget and also help us pay for some of those costs of providing those services, um, we did, we have not increased the middle school and high school activity um, accounts and fees, but we continue to, continue to look for ways to make sure that we can collect those fees as well. The Kids in Action Program and the School Lunch Program are programs where they contribute to the bottom line in terms of um, helping us bu- balance the budget. For full day kindergarten, although we are one of few districts that still charges a kindergarten fee, it's an important um, contribution that is made to the overall budget. And it's a, a cost that is paid by um, elementary parents in terms of making sure that they are providing some kind of um, fee income towards balancing that budget as well. This year, we introduced a transportation fee. And the transportation fee is really based on a guidance from, from, in terms of state law, in terms of who can be charged a transportation fee. And in looking at the comparative data that we looked at, most of our dis, our neighboring districts charge a transportation fee. And the state law suggests that transportation fees can only be charged to students in seventh to twelfth grade. And those kids would be kids um, that, or the only kids that can be charged a transportation fee. So hence the reason for um, focusing on that group of students. Um, I think in terms of our neighboring towns, most neighboring towns also charge their seventh to twelfth graders. For students who are in elementary and sixth grade, who live within two miles of their schools, they can also be charged. But in looking at that population of students, the only students who are currently being cha- provided of transportation are in the case of safety issues and most of those kids are, are actually walkers. So in terms of those, um, the reason for charging the um, transportation fee at the seven to twelve level is consistent with what is being done at, by our neighboring towns as well as what state guy, state guidelines um, provide us with the ability to charge. Okay? This year, we also increased the parking fee. Um, the idea behind that is to, in terms of parking, we wanted to make sure that the cost of parking, um, where students are, have the ability to park immediately outside the building, um, that that was um, equivalent to a transportation fee where they are being dropped off, alright, outside the building. Um, and we thought in terms of, from an environmental perspective as well, that that it made sense to have, to not penalize um, into the, there's no penalizing happening, but to make sure that we're being equivalent and equitable in terms of the fees that are being charged, both at the transportation level and the parking level as well. For those students who are able to um, to drive, as well as those who can take a bus, they are both charged the same rate. Right? So generally, those are the revenue areas for us. And as we go on to the next slide, we combine all of those together in terms of um, the revenue from grants, from revolving, and also um, from our town proceeds as well. And we compare that to our expenses in the next slide. Um, before we jump to expenses, we kind of summarized the fees a little bit. I don't know if you want to jump in on the fees?
On the next slide, sure.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and so as I mentioned, um, we have very few levers left in our budget toolbox. And so given that we had already cut deep into our discretionary lines last year, there really wasn't further to go. And so we did this year, again, on the recommendation of the Sustainable Budget Task Force, look closely at fees, uh, did some significant benchmarking to see um, what other districts uh, are charging in terms of various fees. Um, so as um, previously voted by the school committee, uh, we did not propose increases to our middle school or high school activity fees. Uh, we have made a commitment um, to maintain the full day kindergarten fee at the present rate. Um, the Kids in Action tuition, um, the fees for that were agreed upon and voted upon in December of 24. Um, the Drivers Ed Program is undergoing an evaluation and so we will hold off on making recommendations regarding those fees until that moment in time. Uh, no changes are proposed to the Chromebook repair fee at, for middle school students at this time. However, there were um, four main buckets of proposals for increased fees. Um, the first was, I'll actually work um, from the bottom backwards. Um, and that is, uh, uh, Ayesha Opang mentioned that we are, for the first time this year, proposing a transportation fee. This was not taken lightly. Um, it's something that our district um, has been able to provide um, for free for students for the past many years. Um, but in looking at the levers that we had remaining in our toolbox, we did want to present the school committee uh, with some benchmark data and um, some potential recommendations with regard to a transportation fee. As Ayesha Opang mentioned, uh, we are only proposing a transportation fee for the secondary grades, grade seven to twelve. And the proposed fee for a single student is $250 with a family cap of 500. It's important to note that students who are eligible based on their uh, financial demographics, uh, we do have um, uh, fee relief for those families in need. Um, a related fee that we are proposing is a parking fee. Um, this, we had um, very rich discussion, wanted to thank some of the students uh, for their input on the parking fee. Uh, we did have some conversations about kind of parity between uh, the bus transportation fee and the parking fee. Uh, and so where we landed with that proposal after much debate uh, was a recommendation of a $250 charge for the close lot to be in line with the bus transportation fee and $125 for what's known as the far lot um, at Hingham High. Um, we also um, had um, some pretty rich discussion around athletic fees. And after doing some benchmarking um, to see what our peer districts are doing, uh, we did propose um, a few different types of increases to the athletic fee. Previously, we charged a single flat rate of 425 regardless of the number of sports as, as students played. Um, so we suggested raising that um, to 450 for a single sport and added an additional $200 fee for the second sport. Um, there will be no additional charge for students that um, are three-sport athletes. As we have ha- done in past years, uh, we will have a hockey differential due to the expense of ice time and other considerations for hockey. Uh, we proposed a $300 differential for um, the hockey. And we did propose that our family cap increase from 1,100 to 1,400. And for hockey families with the, the differential, the cap would be raised from 1,300 to 1,700. As previously stated, uh, we do propose maintaining our kindergarten full day fee level at 2950. Uh, we did also um, recommend an increase in facilities fees to ensure that we're covering the costs incurred by community use of our schools. And so we proposed a 3% increase in facility rent- And so, we proposed a 3% increase in facility rental fees. As Ayesha Opang mentioned, we suggest keeping the fee for middle school and high school activities and clubs at the current rate of $100. But we will continue to make efforts to make sure that we are collecting fees from students who participate. Again, with that understanding that for families with need, fees can be and should be waived. I mentioned the new transportation fee of 250 for an individual and 500 for a family cap. And the high school parking fee of 250 for the close lot and 125 for the far lot.
And in terms of the fees, I think I mentioned, we both mentioned some of the activities that those fees cover. In terms of the parking fee, some of the costs that those fees will also cover will be maintaining the parking lots. And also, one of the things that we've had more than usual for the last, this year compared to other years is actually snow, where we've had to clear the parking lots a lot this year. And somehow, we've been lucky in that the snow has come on weekends. Well, lucky for us in terms of being able to have school, but our custodial and maintenance staff have been having to work the weekends as well. So that we're thankful for. And that usually comes with extra overtime pay because of the weekend work as well. So that's some of the costs that we see in terms of the parking as well, just to make sure that the students, at least, Jen, some students can have their parking spots as well, right?
Thank you. Now, before we proceed into the next slides, as I've said in previous meetings, the next few slides will review some of our proposed reductions and efficiencies with regard to staffing. And so, given that we are in a uniquely human business, want to make sure that we're approaching these conversations with sensitivity because we are very grateful for our staff and all that they do for our students. So, given our financial constraints, we did propose some elementary reductions and efficiencies. So again, when possible, when there were leaves or retirements, we took a look at those first before proposing any cuts. So we did, at the elementary level, have a retirement, which we can then replace with a staff at a lower salary. And so, we consider that an efficiency. Similarly, with a proposed leave, we will be able to replace that at a lower salary, indicating another efficiency. We did propose, we currently have four interventionists at each school. After conversations with our leadership team, the proposal is to reduce the number of interventionists at each school by one per school for a total of reductions of four FTEs across the district. We are pleased to be able to bring back our initial proposal with regard to making deeper cuts into our elementary Spanish program. But given the lower class sizes at Plymouth River, we do still propose a .2 cut at the Plymouth River School. The next couple of lines relate to some of those uneven cohorts that I mentioned. So we do, at certain grade levels, have larger and smaller class sizes and cohorts. And so, given that, we will be able to reduce by one FTE at East, based on a smaller cohort in one grade level. Similarly, at Foster, we'll be able to make a reduction. However, based on trends that we're seeing in kindergarten enrollment, and kindergarten enrollment packets are still rolling in. And so, that, those numbers, we are tracking very closely. But based on some of the trends that we're seeing, we are thinking it's likely that we will need an additional kindergarten section at Foster next year. And again, we will continue to share with the committee as we get new information on our enrollment season. And then finally, we have, as part of our contracts, increased parental leave and therefore have increased substitute costs associated with that. So this brings us to a net reduction of 5.2 FTEs at the elementary level in the dollar amount of 293,000.
Okay. And I guess just one other point to make is that, in terms of, here you see that we are being responsive to the enrollment changes in terms of bringing it in line with the school committee policy. Where we do see that certain classrooms, for example, at East and Foster, may be in a position to reduce an FTE because of those limitations. Those adjustments have been made. And in some instances, you may notice that there are smaller classrooms and there may be other factors that are taken into consideration where, and because of those factors, we have not, we've been very deliberate about not reducing those FTEs in those areas. But where we could, we have adjusted for those numbers as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The next slide outlines our proposed efficiencies and reductions at the middle school level. So we do have a retirement of one adjustment counselor that we will be able to hire at a lower salary, resulting in an efficiency. We similarly have a retirement in grade six social studies for which we propose not replacing, resulting in a salary savings. We do propose the reduction of one reading interventionist at the middle school. We do have a long-term sub-efficiency proposed at Hingham Middle School. And then finally, we are looking to restructure slightly our grade six exploratories program, which will result in a savings of .4 FTEs with a total FTE reduction at Hingham Middle School of 2.4 FTEs and a savings of 307,000 dollars. And then finally, our greatest reductions from a dollar amount are, in fact, at Hingham High, which does reflect our enrollment trends. So we did have the retirement of a high school chemistry teacher for which we do not plan to replace. Similarly, we have a world language leave that will remain unfilled. We have a retirement of a technology and engineering teacher that we believe we can hire at a lower rate, resulting in an efficiency. We will have an unfilled leave in English, English Language Arts. Social Studies as well, we will have an unfilled leave. And then we do propose a reduction of 1.0 FTE of the administrative assistant, one of the administrative assistants at HHS. So this will result in a total savings of five FTE for a savings of 528,000 dollars. Earlier in the evening, I mentioned that we did look closely at our administrative structures in the Student Services Department. And in looking at the current structures, we do propose eliminating the secondary special education administrator position. And then finally, in central office, we do propose reduction.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. I recognize some people have heard it. I know that there are some new people here tonight, so felt it was important to get, to give all of that information. And I appreciate the work that Katie Roberts and Ayesha Opang and Erica Pollard and Barbara Cataldo and team and the entire leadership team, the principals. I know this isn't easy. It's not easy to talk about any kind of reductions. I, I know that you stepped into this. This was not something that you were working on as it was given to you. This is something that districts everywhere are dealing with. The way that municipal accounting works is that you have to have a balanced budget. Can't deficit spend when we present a budget, and so, we must have a balanced budget. The administrative, the advisory committee in the town have been talking about the fact that the town has needed to figure out how to manage the increasing budgets for years, going back to 2018. In the Warren article, it talked about how expenses were growing at a rapid pace, and we were trying to figure out how we were going to pay for that. We are a town that has run lean. That was seen through the work that, as mentioned by the presentation tonight, the Sustainable Budget Task Force that was put in place. We started it right as COVID hit, and it was something that the Sustainable Budget Task Force had presented to the Select Board back in 2022. It was a precursor to whether we ask for an override or not. An override is not something to be taken lightly. It is a permanent tax increase once it happens. That report went through to look at our revenues as a town and our expenses and to kind of scrub them, look at it compared to other benchmark towns, see if there was an opportunity to raise our revenues or reduce our expenses. The conclusion from that was that we are a town that runs lean. We can, we saw it before the pandemic. We saw it with our teaching staff. We see it now still with our leadership team. So I look to you and I thank you because I know that you're working all kinds of hours to prepare all of this information. But as a town, we did, we did go through and have an override back in '23. With that was the promise by the boards with this memorandum of understanding that we would stick to a growth rate no more than 3.5% other than carving out that special piece for special ed. So that is where we are today, recognizing last year was the first year that we needed to stay within the 3.5%. There were some cuts made in some of the discretionary spending, as Katie had mentioned. This year, I appreciate your thoughtfulness on, on all the levers that you could pull, and some of that includes fees, increasing fees so that we didn't have to reduce any of our teaching staff. And so, that's where we are today. We've heard some of them, the proposals so far. We voted as a committee. However, tonight is the night where we get to hear from the public. We get to listen to your feedback and concerns and information. And then we take that into consideration when the board deliberates later on this evening. So with all of that said, I want to see if there is anybody who has any feedback for us. If you do, if you could raise your hand online, I'm going to ask you to state your name and address, once I recognize you. And you would have three minutes to present any information you would like us to hear. Nothing? Okay. Oh, Jacqueline, yes. I'm not seeing anybody. My Zoom just booted me out, so I can't see who's online. But it doesn't look like there's anybody who, who has their hand up. So Jacqueline Boprey.
Hello, Jacqueline Boprey, President of the Hingham Education Association. I just wanted to acknowledge that this is, again, a tough budget for everyone, parents, students, and staff. We're all taking a hit here, whether through the introduction of new fees or the potential loss of several colleagues through a reduction in force. So no one likes paying for things that used to be free, clearly. And no one likes losing valued friends and colleagues who we know are making a difference for students. But looking to the future, I hope we can continue to see the need for public funding for public education, both at a local and a state level. And I hope that you, as the school committee members and the Hingham community at large, will stand with union members that I represent across the state as we continue to advocate for more state aid through things like the traditional Chapter 70 funding for education, also higher percentages of CIRCERBRA funding for special education, and things like fully funding pensions to alleviate the stress and pressure districts around the state are facing. These things may seem beyond our level and power, but as an organizer and in the context of big ballot and legislative wins, like the progressive state income tax, I'm actually optimistic and, more importantly, committed to continuing to push for positive change. And I hope you all are too.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or feedback? If not, we will close the public hearing portion and then enter into our, we'll reconvene into our open session. Okay. Not seeing anybody. All right, so.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing on fiscal year '26 budget and resume the open school committee meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So we are now back to our open meeting. With that, we are at item three, approval of minutes. Want to take a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January 27, 2025.
Any discussion?
I had, just on, in the January 27, to separate the motion into three separate motions when we voted on the SOI for the MSBA and then to include the language from the MSBA. And then the final vote to executive session was roll call.
That has been made on the minutes in the packet, but I'll have to state.
Okay, okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay. Do you want to make a motion with amendments?
Table them in.
Table them in.
Table them.
Just because they have to go to the MSBA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Table them.
All right, we'll table the first set of minutes, and then we'll move over to 3.2.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 3, 2025.
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, so item four is questions and comments. This is the portion of the meeting where we set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during new business items that are on the agenda. Before I read this statement, is there anyone who would like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, not seeing any. So moving over to item five, superintendent's report. Katie?
Thank you. This evening, we're proud to announce that HHS history teacher Jamie Zelenka was one of 55 educators nationwide selected for the Researching Silent Heroes Program. So in coordination with the American Battle Monuments Commission, Ms. Zelenka will research a silent hero, an individual who served in the U.S. military. This winter, teachers will meet monthly with historians and research specialists to set their silent heroes into historical context and learn strategies to research their lives. The result of Ms. Zelenka's research will be included in the National History Day's Silent Heroes website for publication in late spring and summer of 2025. So congratulations to Ms. Zelenka. Wanted to extend a thank you to the Gilder Lerman Institute of American History for sharing with Hingham Middle School their fantastic traveling pop-up exhibit on the life of Frederick Douglass. If you have a chance to stop by the HMS lobby, it's definitely worth the take. The exhibition features biographical information about Douglas and includes primary documents from the Gilder Lerman collection. Douglas has interesting connections to Hingham as he gave one of his first recorded anti-slavery speeches at Hingham's First Baptist Church on November 4, 1841. Douglas also returned to Hingham as a headline speaker at the Great Abolition Picnic held at Tranquility Grove in 1844. at Tranquility Grove in 1844. So again, thank you to Gilder Lerman Institute for loaning us this really terrific learning tool. Just wanted to remind the community that we have a really special opportunity to see an expert in the field of social emotional wellness. Lynn Lyons, the author of The Anxiety Audit, will join us on Tuesday, March 4th, for a community event in support of the district's wellness initiatives. The working title for her presentation is "From Stress to Smartphones, From Freakouts to Friendships: Learn Practical Strategies to Support Your Family's Mental Health and Well-Being." So all members of the community are welcome and do hope that you will save the date for that terrific event. Finally, we're excited to announce, we're very grateful for Dr. Cattaldo, who has served as our interim director, executive director of Student Services for the past two years. We've been very grateful to have someone with Dr. Cattaldo's experience and to be able to guide us safely through the past two interim years. But we would like to ask the community to save the date of Thursday, February 27th, for candidate site visits for the executive director of Student Services. So stay tuned for an email that will be outlining all of the specific times for stakeholder focus groups, including an evening community Zoom forum at 7:00 PM on the 27th.
Thank you. It's exciting news. Okay, item six, communications. 6.1, anything received by the superintendent? Okay. 6.2, student communications. Slater, fair face.
None today.
Okay. 6.3, other communications, anything received by the committee? Okay, just moving along. All right, item seven, this is unfinished business to discuss the proposed FY '26 budget and act as appropriate. So this is the time that the committee gets to discuss the proposals and vote on the budget.
Maybe.
Maybe. Right. Just throwing that out there, though. We don't always vote tonight. Somebody want to kick it off?
I'll kick it off. Why not? Because I'm feeling guilty because I missed an opportunity to talk about the communication to see, so I'm going to kind of throw this in together because I just missed it two seconds ago. I did receive some communication about advocating for the interventionist position, and I just didn't know if you did speak about it in your presentation. I just, maybe you could just go maybe a little bit more in depth into that. It's one, just to help me clarify, it's one per elementary school, so that would mean that there's still how many?
Thank you. So we currently, district-wide, at the elementary level, have 16 interventionists, and so this would bring us to 12 interventionists. Want to just make the point that the interventionists have been an incredibly valuable asset to us as we've been coming off the pandemic and plugging that significant learning loss. As you can see from the snapshot of data that I presented, and will also share on February 24th, some of our MTSS data, we're thrilled to say that the interventions have been working. Because of that, we do have a smaller band of students needing intense interventionist, interventions, and so the elementary principals and looking at their schedules, current level of need of students for the more intense interventions, felt comfortable with reducing from four interventionists at each building to three. I will also just add that each building, in addition to the interventionists, we are also very grateful to have two licensed reading specialists that are part of the MTSS team at each building. So these are licensed educators with experience in reading. They are part of the intervention team, as are our math specialists, who are similarly licensed in elementary mathematics instruction. And so our total MTSS team at each building would include the three specialists, two literacy and one math, and three interventionists, for a total of six full FTEs to provide interventions for our MTSS at each building.
I have one other question. I think I asked this a couple weeks ago. It was the, if we're adding a, potentially adding a kindergarten teacher, if the numbers are high up at foster, will that include a para as well for that kindergarten classroom?
That's a great question. So I should, you did, I think she did include that in that as well, with an assumption that we're hiring someone lower on the salary scale. Thank you for that.
Michelle?
I would just say that, although we've heard, we've heard this presentation multiple, multiple times, there is always, there is always some new information that comes through and, you know, just recognizing that, as Jacqueline pointed out, and you've pointed out many times, Katie, you know, these are people and positions that we hate to cut. It's not that we're doing it because we're flush with people, right? These are going to be painful, and they're going to impact students as well, and I think our proposed increases in fees impacts families. So I just would think that there's possibly other information that we could get over the next couple of weeks as we go through AdCom meetings, forecast meetings, select board meetings. So I'm, personally, I would prefer waiting to vote on a final budget number until we go through those meetings, just to see what there might, what new information might be out there, including potentially more kindergarten registrations.
Yeah, a few of the variables remaining not only include kindergarten registration, but particularly with the opening of the new foster. When we met with the demographer for the enrollment study that we'll present later in the evening, she suggested we also look closely at the likelihood of some of our students who are currently in private kindergarten choosing to enroll at foster for first grade. And we do not have that data yet, and so we, we will be looking, again, not only at kindergarten, but also at first grade enrollment as well. That's a variable. And then, as I mentioned, the IEP process is underway, and so as IEPs are written, we will have additional and new information with regard to some of our special education expenses in both directions. So there could be savings or there could be greater expenses, but we'll continue to monitor that, so.
So it's possible we could technically just vote on the number. We did that last year, we voted on the number first, and then I guess voting on, we have to technically vote on the layoffs, I believe, although I don't know if that language has changed in the current contract. We just changed the date. Okay, so then we technically have to vote on the layoffs, I believe, separately? So we could, we could vote if that's what, and throwing an idea out, though. We could technically just vote on the number.
The number is.
We could not vote on the layoffs, obviously, tonight.
Because we have to.
Is it March 15?
No, it's, it was changed in the last agreement, so I think.
In April 15?
April 15. Yeah, so, no, I appreciate the, the presentation as well and just tying everything to the portrait of a learner and a strategic plan. I guess along those lines, there are a couple things, and one was the elementary school interventionists, too, because it has been so successful. And so I, I'm nervous about cutting them just soon into, I mean, it's, it's still new. There still are achievement gaps between learners, even, like, everyone's kind of done better, but there's still that gap in there. So just being cognizant of that, and I'm not super comfortable with cutting them. And also with the middle school level, we've talked about trying to beef up the MTSS at the secondary level, but we're proposing cutting a reading specialist. And so it's, I just don't know if you have any ideas on how to square that.
Yeah, so if you take a look at some of the enrollment data that I presented and the average class sizes, we do actually think we may be able to deploy some general educators to do some of the math interventions and some of the literacy interventions. So for example, for math, we do currently have some general educators who are running things like our math lab, which is one of our MTSS interventions at the middle school. So given that we have some lower class sizes at the middle school, our thought is to deploy, as in the same way that we can at the elementary, deploy general educators for some of those MTSS interventions, our thinking was to deploy some of our educators to serve in that way.
That makes me feel better about it. That makes sense. I guess the, the one other thing is I just want to strongly support the, keeping a communication specialist if possible. I've seen what, what it looks like when we kind of piecemeal it out to different people. It's just having one person, it's made such a huge difference in communications, and I know that was part of our strategic plan, that was a big goal. It's one I think we've really met and done a really good job with, but we, we don't want to just, and I know you know this, but we don't want to just drop it now and, and go backwards. So I just, I guess that's my biggest concern is like making sure that we are moving forward with all of these things and not losing any ground, so.
Yeah, I do, just want to share a note of thanks. Our communication specialist really has brought some consistency to our communication. I don't want to use the term branding, but I know that, you know, all of our communications now have a similar look and feel and cadence and timing and so on, which was something that was very much lacking before. And so she's definitely built the capacity of all of our district leaders to be better communicators, though.
Yeah, the consistency is key, though. I think that's a really important one.
Yeah, I would just follow up on that with the communications. Having someone in that position, I know it's not a student-facing position, so to the public it may appear as just another expense, but it does really alleviate a lot of work for, I think, the administrators and having to answer questions and having a place where all their information is centralized, and that's been a huge asset to the district with the website and the app and all of that. And I know it does take some burden off of central office, which is already running lean, so just to explain a little to the public part of what you're getting with that position. So I do worry about that as well. I think the other thing I worry about is we're making these reductions this year. We know our budget numbers for next year with the MOU. We're adding all these fees, and we've been talking about these fees the last couple of years and kind of pushing them off. And so I just want, I mean, for the public to understand that next year, we are still going to have to be looking at potential reductions, and some of these things are going to keep coming up, and we really have no other place with the fees or other levers. So they're painful, I think, for all of us to have to even think about or to, to approve potentially, but it's helping with keeping the student-facing positions, and next year we're still going to have to address it.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I'm, I'm a little confused on the communication. Is it, I thought we were just reducing it to half.
We are reducing it and reapplying some grant funding to that position.
And then is it possible to have, I think previously there was maybe a possibility of discussing with the town side if they were, if they wanted to split, a split position, maybe?
We had some early conversations about that, so we will revisit that.
Can I just follow up on, I don't, because you've said it a couple times, I haven't asked the question. I don't understand that, like, applying grant money, like, so right now, one person is working every day on communications.
Yes.
The current proposal is next year, maybe that same person or maybe a different person would work two and a half days out of, or whatever, 20 hours a week versus 40 hours. Is that accurate? And then what is the grant money being? I don't really get like what that actually means in terms of.
Yeah, thanks for the question. And so we will use operational funds for the core functions of the communication specialist. Currently, HCam, Harbor Media, does have an educational programming station and has a certain amount of airtime for things related to educational programming. There is some grant funding associated with that that would be in addition to. The .5 position would be really more about our operations and day-to-day communications. That additional grant funding would flesh out the position hopefully a bit more to do some of that educational programming for Harbor Media that would certainly complement our core communication, and so it's a way to kind of flesh that out a bit. Again, we very much appreciate and understand how important the position is, but again, we were trying to weigh that against student-facing. But I do agree that proactive communication is an expectation of the community, and again, some of the tools that the specialist has introduced has really helped with our efficiency and just the look of our communications, so.
Separate question on the interventionists. Would we always have the same number at every school? There'd be a different, you know, different number of students at each of the elementary schools, like, kind of significant difference in it. So can you just talk me through why, right now, it's all, we have the same number, and is there a consideration that, I don't know, I, I know we don't have any extra additional funds, but like, could you, could you make a decision to say, while we'd love to keep everyone, we're actually going to eliminate two instead of four because two of the elementary schools have either more people or more needs, or is that the wrong way to think about it?
No, I, that's not, everything is on the table as we're looking at, that's why we are taking such a close look at things like enrollment and class sizes. And so I do think as we progress through the next couple of years of the MOU, next year actually will be a more challenging year because we're out of levers, and so we'll continue to track the enrollment and the class sizes and the uneven cohorts and make decisions. I do think that it will be helpful to have one more year to see how enrollment across town shakes down at different schools. So in particular, against foster is a big question mark of the impact of that new building opening, and so I do think that it will be important, again, the enrollment study presentation is coming up, but I would recommend that we refresh that enrollment study with NUSDAQ at the very least for the next couple of years while we try to get a sense of if there are any shifts in enrollment. But next year, we will need to look at the, the various schools and the total enrollment and make some decisions with regard to things like some of the support staff and so on.
I have one other question. This is kind of above Hingham, but we do, we do receive some IDEA grant and occasionally Title I, depending on the year, it seems like. Is there any concern with what's going on at the federal level, the U.S. Department of Education?
Quite frankly, yes. However, at this point, we just simply don't have enough information in order to factor that into our budget projections. I will say in the short term, both Erica Pollard and I do have particular worries about professional development. We heavily rely on Title II and Title IV funding, which in a given year provides anywhere between 60,000 to 80,000 of our professional development budget, and so that is a, a short-term area of concern. Title I is similarly up in the air, although each year we are always on the cusp of qualifying, not qualifying, for Title I because it is based on socioeconomics, and our town is kind of right on the cusp of qualifying for that. IDEA is something we can't even really think about or wrap our minds around, but we've been working closely with state partners. So DUCY has been providing regular guidance, to the extent that they can, to our local Massachusetts context, and so we'll continue to rely on them for that partnership to help us interpret the many federal orders and edicts that are coming fast and furious our way.
Yeah, thank you.
And in terms of that, too, because of the way the MOU is written, and for, because of the way the MOU is written, unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, I don't know, depends on which side of the coin you're on, it spells out that we would first apply grant funding, and then we would have the net amount in terms of that, that the town would reimburse. If it is for whatever reason, IDEA goes away on that formula, on that slide, it means that, based on the way the MOU is written, the town would have to reimburse us for more of those funds, just based on the way the MOU was written, at least for the next few years that we, within that MOU.
Right, because there wouldn't be grant money to apply.
Exactly, yeah.
It never feels good to put forth a budget that reduces staff by 15 people. Thank you, sorry. It never feels good to pass a budget that reduces staff in a district by 15 people. I think, I don't want to say what makes me feel bad because nothing makes me feel good about it. I know losing 15 people makes the schools busier. It has all these trickle-down effects that other sta, that staff in the schools will feel. We're talking about, you know, regular ed, their general ed teachers covering different aspects of different, those teachers weren't sitting doing nothing at the time when
aspects of different, those teachers weren't sitting doing nothing at the time when they're, so we're shuffling people who are already busy. But I think what makes me feel like this is doable is A, the incredible data that we have to know that if we truly are going down a wrong path with this, and it's the numbers start to show with our students, that we will see that pretty quickly and can change direction. And the other thing that doesn't make me feel better, actually makes me feel much worse, but we're all on a list of where we get emails every day from the Massachusetts Alliance of School Committee members. And we get, you know, 20 emails a day for, not email, 20 articles a day about education in Massachusetts. And Hingham is doing pretty well financially compared to a lot of districts in Massachusetts that with the Esser money being cut off and the COVID money being cut off and the extra staff that all these districts hired during COVID, schools are laying off significant, like much higher numbers than 15 people around the state. So that does not make me feel good. But for Hingham, it makes me feel like we're going to be okay. So I'm very, and it just, you know, the difficulty of spending six months on a document that at the end of the day is going to lay off 15 people that because of constraints that are out of your control and your, you know, universally to the leadership team, just acknowledging that this is the product of a lot of work and it doesn't feel good sometimes, so.
Thank you, Tim.
I think, just to Jacqueline's earlier point and Carrie's more recent point too. I mean, I think we do as a community and a town need to be paying attention to what's going on with potential cuts to Department of Education funding and be prepared for that. We can hope that it won't come to that, but we have to prepare that that could be a reality. And I think as a community, we want to not only continuing providing the level of services we provide to our students, but also the level of care that they are provided to or for. You know, I think our teachers, our librarians, our interventionists are doing amazing work with kids. And, you know, I think there are a lot of students out there right now who are worried and scared, and I think a lot of parents and families as well for their students. So I just hope that we can keep that in the back of our mind and as a community, really come together and support the students and the budget that's needed for the students and find ways to work with the legislature and along with the HEA and the MTA and make sure that we continue to get the funding we need for our schools and our kids.
I agree with all that. As I've said before, I hate the way education is funded here in Massachusetts. I pointed out a week or so ago that Massachusetts is the number one state for education. We're doing something right. But we are constrained by Prop 2 and 1/2, which in Hingham, most of our revenues comes from property taxes. So to go over the 2 and 1/2% is challenging, but doesn't mean that we don't have levers, similar to the levers that we have at the school department level where we can raise fees. The levers on the municipality side is that the town continues to have discussions about what the priorities are and supports, supports increased budgets and increased, you know, opportunities to have overrides. It's either that or we need to figure out other ways to raise revenue here in Hingham, which I constantly go to bed thinking about every day. My AdCom and Select Board members, I'm sure are listening and they're chuckling because I'm constantly sending ideas to them. I think we, you know, we built the ship. It was a lean department for so long and during COVID, recognizing the learning loss that was happening, we finally built the ship and got the MTSS model in place. And it would be a shame to see it dismantled. And just, I'm not an educator, just but boots on the ground, seeing the difference in kids from a before school program that I taught before the pandemic and post pandemic, I can see what some of the teachers are dealing with. And I share it frequently that I used to have the K through 2 on two days and then three through five. The K through 2 kids were the sweet ones, would sit crisscross applesauce pre pandemic and they were just very good listeners. I only had them 40 minutes. But the stark difference between the behavior and the mental health and the social emotional problems is evident even in that 40 minute class that I was teaching just a couple weeks, a couple months ago. There's just something that happened during the pandemic. So we have to be mindful of that and mindful that kids are still struggling. Just hearing recently that somebody was at the ER and there were children who were in there for suicide attempts. So it's still happening and it's heartbreaking and we can't, we can't keep our eye off the ball on that. So I think it's important to continue to have these discussions. With all of that said, and with some of the information that's still to come, how, where does everybody land? Do we want to vote on a number tonight and then hold off on positions or do we want to hold off on the whole budget?
I mean, I don't mind voting on the number. It's the MOU, I mean, it's the MOU number. It's not.
Right, we know, we know what that is.
We know what the MOU number is going to be.
I prefer to wait on the positions until we have all the information or as much as we can get.
It's not on the agenda yet.
There you go.
All right, so we have a meeting on February 24th. How do you feel about information that might be coming in before then?
We will have some by that point. We would have a better sense of kindergarten enrollment by the 24th. I think the grade one numbers will be a bit slower. And certainly the education plans will be written throughout the spring. So I, we can certainly provide a snapshot as of, not as lengthy of a presentation, but provide a snapshot of where we are as of the 24th. And then I think our next meeting after that is the 10th and could come back with some additional, additional tweaks from there. But I'd say the 24th, we will have certainly some new information to share.
Okay. Can you just remind me, Ness, that I forget every year, the process, like I just, every time we have this conversation, I kind of forget, like, what would it mean if we voted today versus on March 10th? Like, if we got new information on March 10th, I'm not, I'm not advocating for voting today, I'm just trying to understand, like, if you got more information two weeks from now and we had had a vote that had sort of proved something and that can be changed, I'm assuming, or I don't know, I guess, just walk me through the process of like, what exactly are.
Yep, so pre MOU, it was different because we didn't have a number, but now we have a number that we stick with within, within the MOU. So now it's just how, what are the levers, like any positions that might need to be had? And then what does that mean as far as the staffing goes? So that's still up in the air, but we can vote the budget number, given that it's.
Yeah, so the budget number is fine, but with the, like, I guess how late can we vote on the staffing number?
We have to let them know by April 15th, I believe it is, according to the MOU. So before then.
Town meeting is the 27th?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying we should, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
But then, but then nothing will change in the warrant because the numbers will be the same.
Right. It's just our decisions.
But we technically have to vote on the layoffs is what we're, is what we're saying. And we can't do that today.
Right, which, just to clarify, and part of the reason to potentially wait on making the, the individual decisions is, as painful as it is for people's livelihoods to not be certain what's happening, the HEA had agreed to the change in date because of the budget cycle. Because we all sort of recognized when we talked it through, letting you know by March 15th, we still have a little, there's, there's still some hope that something might change between now and then. So if we could have until April 15th. So that was a big part of the reason that we came to that agreement for that date, so.
I mean, I think it makes sense to vote on the budget number tonight.
Right, we know what it is.
I guess later for the, for the positions.
Yeah.
I guess the only reason not to is if we thought that some, something was going to come up where we're going to lose a position that was vital, you know, but I don't know. I mean, it depends on, it depends on how people feel about that.
Okay. Do we have consensus? Does somebody want to make a motion?
To just vote on the.
On the total.
Okay, we'll make a motion to vote on the FY 26 budget, the amount of 70,383,752.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. All right, so we will circle back, we'll get an update on the 24th and then decide where we are at that time and whether we are ready to make, whether we're ready to vote on those positions at that time. Okay, all right. Item eight is new business, 8.1. This one is exciting to discuss proposed superintendent goals and act as appropriate now that we have our permanent superintendent. She's pulled together some goals for us, so thought we could present it and vote on her goals this evening.
Terrific, well, there'll be no surprises here. Again, we've been actively working towards objectives in our strategic plan over the course of the year. And so this really just formalizes many of the conversations that have already taken place. So first and foremost, in goal setting for any educator or administrator, the first goal is always centered on student learning. And we are in the third year of a three year implementation of our new literacy program. I would actually argue the second year of adoption is probably as important as the first as we're making tweaks and adjustments based on data that we're seeing to the implementation of our new inter-reading program. This year, we are also continuing working through PLCs with our elementary educators to really make sure that we're centering best practices. We continue to focus on structured literacy across the early grades, K2. And we're also continuing to focus on literacy and writing instruction across content areas, particularly in the areas of science and social studies. We'll continue to analyze and present the results of our MTSS data. And also wanted to say that we're supporting all of this initiative with professional development, including our multisensory literacy instruction PD, including IMSE OG comprehensive. And so again, a component of a student learning goal is that it would be applied to, tied rather, to MTSS data. The second goal for a new superintendent is around an induction program. So any educator at any level, whether it's superintendent, a principal, or an educator in their first year in a role, it is a DUC recommendation to have a goal around induction. So as you're aware, I am enrolled in the new superintendent induction program through the Mass Association of School Superintendents. So we have a few dozen new superintendents from across the Commonwealth. And so we meet monthly as a group with our mentors and I do meet weekly with my mentor, Bella Wong, who is a, was a superintendent in both NADAC and Belmont. And so we'll continue to participate in the ENCEP program. And as part of the accountability of that program, I will be crafting along with the community, a strategic plan that will be associated with an entry plan. Next up, I selected three district improvement goals and these will not be any surprise to anyone who's been listening into our recent school committee meetings, all very much in line with our recent conversations. So we have highlighted one of our areas of innovation in our curriculum and that includes the building thinking classrooms initiative at the secondary level. So very grateful to Hingham Education Foundation for their partnership in this initiative. And we'll continue to work on a multi-year plan to transform classroom spaces across grade six to 12 to deepen understanding of mathematics pedagogy through high quality job embedded coaching and professional development. And we will be tying this goal to analysis of our mathematics data in MCAS. I'm grateful to some of the members of the committee here who have joined me on the Portrait of a Learner Committee. And so we spent the entire fall working with many stakeholders across the community to develop a vision of the skills and competencies that all Hingham learners should access during their K-12 journey in HPS. So throughout the fall, we conducted surveys, focus groups and interviews to capture community feedback. And we will be presenting, I'm hoping, on February 24th or March 10th, the results of this work. But the presentation of the Portrait of a Learner is not the end of the project, it's just the beginning. We'll then be working on the implementation and rollout of the final product to our faculty and developing an action plan around it. Finally, the third goal, as I mentioned earlier in the evening, we are in the final year of a three year strategic plan. And so a major goal for the spring is to work with stakeholders across the district to develop a strategic plan for the 25, 28 school year. And similar to the Portrait of a Learner, there will be similar action steps of survey, surveys, we'll be able to pull actually some of the previous focus group data. We'll be looking to articulate district priorities and develop a multi-year plan with associated action steps. As part of this, we will be centering some of the existing documents that we have, including the special ed strategic plan. We'll be making sure that that's rolled into and centered into that strategic plan. And we will be presenting the final strategic plan to the committee in June of this year.
Thank you very much for pulling that together.
Yep. So I was just, thank you for putting that together. You're right, it's not a surprise at all. The only thing is, I don't see any indicators for management and operations.
So goal setting, so management and operations, I will submit other evidence under each of, each of the standards.
Okay.
And so similar to the way an educator, when they do their goal setting, the goals are one component of the evaluation process, but it doesn't encompass all of an educator or leader's work. So this is a snapshot of some of the key areas. And I would say that in terms of management and operation, a lot of that will live in the strategic plan, I would say. So the strategic plan will encompass not, so what I love about the Portrait of a Learner is it's centering the teaching and learning and really the student facing. Strategic plan does get into many of those other aspects. So I do anticipate, for example, there will be some strategic goals around HR, which is an area that we've been working on, perhaps related to financial systems. And so I do think more of the management and operations will come through in the strategic planning.
That's what I was thinking, I was just confused.
What? It's a good catch, Carrie, because it has to be, she.
Yeah, in the past, it's been the focus indicators of.
So when we, when we were doing our review, I mean, I'm sure they're in here.
Yeah, I was going to.
We just need to list the spokes under the focus indicators. Like you just said, like HR probably would fall under, you can add it on to the list. It just.
Okay.
When we're doing our evaluation.
And I'm happy to refine this and bring it back to a future meeting with some of the indicators online.
I was going to give you credit for being an overachiever and putting a lot of more focus indicators than you needed to. I was like, as always, from Ms. Roberts, I'm overachieving over there. But I see what Carrie's saying. And I think it's like, just an example, because you're supposed to have at least one focus indicator from each thing. So like, even under like superintendent's induction program, you could probably include 2D, which is laws, ethics and policies, because you're learning that as part of that work.
That's true, that could go under strategic plan too, especially attached to the special education strategic plan.
When we're doing the evaluation, we don't, if it's not listed, then we're not.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
Which actually, that's why I appreciated that there were more focus indicators. Sometimes it's hard because you're doing so good at something and then it's not, that's not one of the things we're supposed to be grading you on.
Yeah, exactly.
Terrific, so I'm happy to make some adjustments to the indicators.
Great, thank you.
It's so funny because when I read it, I read it as B, just management and operations, but it's not, each one has a A, B and C.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments or feedback that you didn't think about?
I was just going to say for members of the public who don't see this form on the screen, the only thing worse than doing the superintendent's evaluation in public is doing and trying to figure out this. is doing and trying to figure out this rubric before the superintendent's evaluation. It is very confusing.
All right.
Great. So I'll bring back a revised version for the 24th meeting with the standards and indicators aligned.
Thank you so much. Okay, eight point two, to discuss the NESDEC enrollment study. So Katie had mentioned this as part of the budget presentation, but we have hot off the press the enrollment study. So I'll pass it over.
Terrific, thank you. And so Sheri will just bring up that presentation. So while Sheri's bringing up the presentation, I just wanted to share a little bit of history of our relationship with NESDEC. So NESDEC is the New England School Development Council, a private, not-for-profit educational organization. And there are roughly 300 school districts that are affiliates with NESDEC. And some of the services that they provide to member districts include planning, management support, executive searches, and PD. We previously had a relationship with NESDEC that we did let lapse. So our last enrollment study through NESDEC was in 2018. And so when I took over as superintendent and was looking at the most recent enrollment study that was conducted in 2018, there was a little pandemic thrown in the midst there that really skewed the data. So Ayesha Opong and I thought it was important to renew an enrollment study. And so we have reforged our partnership with NESDEC. And as I mentioned, I do recommend that we continue that partnership, at least for the next couple of years, as we're trying to see how our enrollment trends are settling out. The original enrollment study done in 2018 was done just prior to being invited by the MSBA into the core building grant program for the new foster school. And so that study provided projections for the years 2019 to 2029. And so again, given those pandemic shifts, we are hoping that the current projections are much more accurate for both the short term and the long term. And so when we say this is hot off the presses, Ayesha Opong and I just got this in our hands about a week ago. We had a chance to meet with the demographer, who conducted the study, which was terrific. And she was able to share with us how she makes some of the projections. So I'm happy to answer any questions around that. But just for the public's information, some of the data that we submitted was simply our current snapshot of pre-K to 12 enrollment in the district. Shared other information with regard to some of our students who may be in private schools, resident students in private schools, VOTAC schools, homeschooled students, and so on. And the demographer also takes into consideration things like birth rates, in-and-out migrations, opening and closing of a school. So for us, the opening of foster certainly will be taken into consideration in the projections, any new development trends related to building permits being pulled, and so on. And so I'll just have you forward two slides, Sheri. Thank you. One, two, and one more? And one more. Thank you. So first, wanted to just share, give a little snapshot into the enrollment study process. And so the enrollment gives a 10-year projection, but the demographer explained to think of it in a three-year chunk for taking a look at shorter-term planning and then take the out-years as a benchmark for longer-term planning. Given that this is the first enrollment projection that has been done for Hingham since 2018, NESDEC will next fall take a look at the accuracy of some of their predictions and make refinements. Similarly, NESDEC will accept from us some revisions as soon as this spring, once we get our finalized kindergarten and first grade numbers. And they'll refine some of their projections accordingly. So each fall, NESDEC secures birth data from state sources. They do make some projections with regard to estimated births, which are estimated based on the average of the previous five years of birth data. And NESDEC acknowledges that there is variability in these projections. It is noted that the average number of births in Hingham has increased by 13 from a previous 10-year average of 216 to a now projected average of 229 births in Hingham per year. What the demographer noted is that there is a clear migration trend of families moving to Hingham just prior to kindergarten enrollment. So the birth data is helpful, but there is a significant uptick between birth data and actual kindergarten enrollment based on in-migration into the district. And so this average rate of in-migration is also factored into the kindergarten projections. So this slide here, again, shows that ratio of the birth rates in the dark green with the lighter green above it showing the actual kindergarten enrollment. So the dark green is showing the census data of that cohort of students' birth year. And then you can see the uptick, obviously with the pandemic throwing a pretty significant wrench because there wasn't a whole lot of in-migration, not a whole lot of home sales specifically during that time. But we can see that trend over time. So in terms of grade level projections beyond kindergarten, they are calculated from the historical enrollment data to determine a reliable percentage of increase or decrease in enrollment between any two grades. For example, K to one is one that we have a difficult time projecting. And so they simply take an average of kind of recent trends. So if 100 students enrolled in grade one in a given year increased to 104 kind of reliably over time, there'd be a survival rate, as they call it, of 104%. And so that's how they make those projections of grade level to grade level. And again, we will be submitting revised enrollment data based on our kindergarten and in fact, our 1 to 12 enrollment in late spring for that refined projection. So this next slide shares our historical enrollment data for the last 10 years. So you can see that pre-pandemic, we were above the 4,000 threshold in terms of total population. And like many area districts across the state, we have seen a dip post-pandemic. The next slide shows the projections of total enrollment for the next 10 years. And you can see that the projection is for a relatively stable student population over the next several years. So in terms of total enrollment, we'll be hovering around that 3,500 mark for the next many years. However, that average of the total enrollment doesn't really paint the full picture. So this graph here actually breaks things out by grade level. And what we can see is that our elementary enrollment, which did take a significant dip post-pandemic, has rebounded and will be relatively level over time, perhaps with a slight uptick. Our middle school has been kind of steadily declining incrementally over time. But two is anticipated to level off and perhaps even have a slight uptick over the next decade. Our high school enrollment, however, is expected to continue to have incremental decline. This is just another look at that similar data showing that the enrollment trends are going to remain relatively stable. Perhaps a slight uptick for elementary remaining relatively stable for middle school and a decline for high school. This graph here, I just highlighted for you some of the highest levels that we've seen in the district at each level for the pre-K and K-5 band, the 6, 8 band, and the 9, 12 band, just for historical context. And this slide here shows the projections. And here, I just highlighted for you that three-year projection. I'd say that this data here is what we can use for making short-term staffing decisions, looking at things like class sizes and enrollment. This will give us a good snapshot of that. And the 10-year projection is what we can use perhaps for some longer-term planning. So just to share the most high-level trends, I did share the slide as a teaser, a sneak peek during our budget presentation, but I think it's worth reiterating. So over the next three years at the elementary level, we anticipate and project an increase of 35 students. And over the next 10 years, project an increase of 92 students. In grade six, we project just a slight decrease of six students over the next three years. But that will actually have an upswing over the next seven years or so, projecting an increase, the middle school level of 63 students. During the pandemic, we did see, post-pandemic, rather, we have seen an increased number of students heading to private school. And so the grade nine to 12 enrollment, if that trend continues, will decrease by 95 students over the next three years and by 168 over the next 10. And just again, that total, and over time, is anticipated to be relatively steady. In terms of some of the other data that's looked at, I found this one rather interesting. As someone who's lived in town for 28 years, interesting to take a look at how our town has grown over the years. So in the 2018 enrollment study, we were in the middle of a building boom, places like the shipyard and other developments. And so you can see a large number of building permits that were issued during that time. In the recent years, post-pandemic, we have seen very, very few single-family units built relative to pre-pandemic. And at this time, no multi-unit, although we did last year, of course, hear about the French Street development proposed at 120 units. So that is always a consideration. But over the last five years, we have not seen large multi-unit developments that do very significantly impact the local school in which those developments take place. So that's something that we would need to continue monitor very closely if there are any multi-family units proposed, such as was proposed last year with the MBTA.
Do we know if this includes EDUs? And I ask that because people will add an EDO onto their property and then they might move into it as empty nesters and then their next generation might move into the home. Does that include? Those are just single-family homes that are being built, correct?
Correct. So it's just new single-family homes. And so that is not a specific question. We asked the demographer, but certainly something we could ask her. So this slide here, I find interesting because this gets at some of the behavior trends that we've seen post-pandemic. So we know that Hingham, as well as many other area districts, have seen an uptick in private and parochial school enrollment of our resident students. So we currently, and thank Sheri Robertson, who does all the data collection from the private schools of where our Hingham resident students are enrolled. So we currently have 824 resident students enrolled in private and parochial schools. Again, the trends and the projections for the secondary level are based on the last five years of behavior. Given that there was a high pandemic-driven private school exodus, it's hard to say if that behavior will continue. And so just wanted to share the N of the private school enrollment because some of those students may come back. And we do hope that is something we'd certainly aspire to and work towards. We'll clarify that anytime I share an out-of-district number, I will share the date of which that number was reported. So these are our numbers as of October 1st, 2024. At that time, we had 55 students in out-of-district placements. We do not currently have students choicing in to HPS. Historically, we did have a policy where staff were allowed to choice their children into the district. We're only currently doing that at pre-K. So that would not be included here. Our choiced-out students would include students at charter or magnet schools. We currently have 13. We do need to update that in the NESDEC study. Reported that as zero. But we do in fact have 13 students at charter or magnet schools. We do have six students who are homeschooled. And we currently have four students out of VOTAC slash AGI. And that, I believe, is kind of the end of this enrollment study. Now, I did just want to clarify that there is a distinction between an enrollment study and a redistricting study. This is not a redistricting study. Redistricting studies, such as are being currently conducted in places like Braintree, cost upwards of six figures. So this was, this was not that. This is just to give us a snapshot of enrollment trends to help us make some decisions in the short term with regard to staffing and make some longer-term projections. We are taking a look at building usage and using this enrollment study to help us figure how to best maximize the resources that we have. And so our team, given that this is such new information, thus far, our senior leadership team here has taken a deep dive. We've had a brief period of time to take a look with our principals, but our full leadership team won't have a chance to look at this until Thursday of this week. And so we'll continue to monitor these trends and share out as appropriate.
Can I add to that? That those other district communities that had done those redistricting plans that cost six figures, they take, it's like a two- to three-year process.
Yes, yes.
It's easy to see the difference between an enrollment study and then those.
Yes, yes. But I didn't, wanted to make sure that people weren't confusing the two. This is an enrollment study.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Clarification on the projected enrollment at the high school levels. You said that it, you know, is showing that it will have a slight dip. And I assume part of that is obviously the normal trend we see between ninth or eighth and ninth with kids switching to private schools. But is part of that just also, if you look, you know, over the 10-year course of the classes that will be aging up to secondary or smaller currently anyways? So that if we see where they're increasing in elementary school currently, if you look at 20 years, you then see that start to go up again?
Yes, absolutely. And so the students who might have had an exodus to private school, we saw a larger exodus of elementary students, middle school and high school students, as we know, were better able to manage remote learning and such. And so we did not have the same number. But as that elementary cohort who were in school during the pandemic that left a private school, that cohort will be heading the high school and will be impacting those enrollment numbers.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because it, you know, I didn't want people to think the implication was we're losing additional students. It's just that those students are aging up in their smaller classes.
I also just want to make one point that I meant to mention is that this data here doesn't really adequately capture our pre-K enrollment. So most enrollment studies are focused on K to 12. But we actually do have a robust preschool and pre-K program. And I do always have in the back of my mind that universal pre-K has been widely socialized. It is a priority for the Hili administration. And so when we're talking about enrollment and building capacity, we do need to be mindful of the fact that we do have a robust preschool and pre-K program. we do need to be mindful of the fact that we do have a robust preschool and pre-K program that might not be adequately captured here in this particular document.
Is the post-grad program factored?
Was the post-grad program factored in the 18 to 22-year-olds?
It is not. And so that's a great point as well. So both the preschool and the post-grad would not be factored in here as well. And in terms of building usage too, I would also just add that specialized programming doesn't take up space in the same way as gen ed classrooms. So when we're looking at building usage, the specialized program might have a small number of students in a classroom. And so when we make the leap to kind of building usage, that's something just to keep in mind.
I think just some observations looking at this. And I know there's been some chatter out there about the enrollment declining by 15%. So why are expenses going up? But it's not like-for-like, right? I mean, I was thinking about, hey, it's easy to sort of compare the municipal budget to your home budget. But I think when one's, if you're fortunate to have students who go off to college and one of them leaves for college, electricity bill's still the same, right? You're still, you know, I mean, the grocery bill goes down, right? But the mortgage is still the same. Yeah, but, yeah. But you know what I mean? It's like, you can't just say like, oh, because this number of kids left, you should be able to have an equal discount in the expenses because it just, buildings don't work that way. And I think, looking at this, to Ally's point, it's, you know, you're looking at 10 years, but the kids in pre-K right now, as that population is growing, we're not seeing that yet in the high school area. And then I think this would have been very convenient if we had seen, oh, the elementary population is declining. So we have different decisions to make. But this clearly shows that it is not. Where it is decreasing is at the high school level, but that's on average 42 students per grade. And when you think about the levels that we have at the school and the different classes that the kids want to take, I mean, it's not really enough to say, oh, we'd be able to cut X number of staff because you're still going to need the, you know, it's easier at an elementary to say, oh, we'll now only need 20 sections in total across the district. You can't do that at the secondary level. So this is really great data to have. And I just hope people read it in that vein, that secondary level makes it a little more complicated to equate.
Yeah. I've been thinking about it. I was reading something that had, it was like the number of sections. I was discussing it with somebody and really looking at, they are lower than they were previous years. So I went back and looked at, I think it was like one, two years before COVID. And I just looked at the elementary school teachers, how many of the core teachers we had. And the numbers are still the same. And we're, but we're down like eight or nine sections. But they're still, it's still the same. So even with the enrollment going down, I think the administration has done a good job of reducing and reallocating those resources because the number, the class size is still the same, but we've reduced the sections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, though. So there was a question at a joint session that we had last week about, did you consider, given the Center for Active Living is, Center is being built, did you consider being able to use one of the elementary schools and combining the four elementary schools into three? And I recognize most of the people here and online have heard that answer, but we have a recording that people watch. And I thought that the answer was important to know. So if you don't mind sharing that again?
Yeah, absolutely. So as I already kind of indicated, the enrollment study does project that we will have steady to a slight increase in elementary enrollment over time with a number of factors that are unknown, including the foster effect. So when you have a new building, we have already had a significant amount of reach out from Yelters. Very excited to sell homes in the Foster District. And families are very much interested in that district. So I would say that is one factor. I also mentioned that we have a robust and growing preschool and pre-K program that is not factored in to this enrollment study, including our Kids in Action Program, which is revenue generating. And we do have a high demand for that. And so taking into all of those factors, it is not indicating that we would be able to easily collapse. There are also considerations with regard to transportation. We have a long and skinny town. And so in order to bus students all the way to Foster, for example, it would involve pretty significant increases in transportation. I will also just add that at Plymouth River, we are just in the process of completing a major renovation of that facility where it was a $4 million project, the Windows and Columns Project, of which we had about $1.3 million from the MSBA. There is a 20-year lookback on that building. And if the building is used as anything other than a school, we will need to repay the $1.3 million to the MSBA. So that is new information that Ayesha Opang researched for us today. And so that is something that would be a consideration as well. Twenty years. Twenty years. I thought it was 10 for some reason, but Ayesha did research that. And it is in fact a 20-year look back when we accept MSBA funding.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jaclyn Vopray, President of Hingham Education Association. I just had a quick clarifying question. For those of us that don't know the geography of Hingham, where is French Street if you're thinking hypothetical developments?
Yes.
Totally hypothetical.
In the PRS District.
Plymouth River.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, no problem. There's a couple developments there. That was the MBTA. And then there was another one that's still being discussed and at a town level. Okay. Anything else? No. All right. Okay, moving on. So 8.3, I did see some in the packet, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. Ayesha?
In terms of the grants, I just wanted to give an update in terms of the EPA grants that we received. We keep on, we continue to get notifications in terms of the fact that those grants are still paused in terms of, I know that's funny because I was driving in and listening to NPR. And even while I was listening on the radio coming in, there was, it seemed like there may be additional legislative action, well, not legislative, but direction coming from the courts as well in terms of that. So that's in flux. But basically, from what we have so far, the grant funding has been paused. But I just want to let you know that even with that information, we're still continuing to trek forward because we're not sure in terms of with those, the courts having a lot of the decision-making information coming out. We don't want to be caught with being unprepared if things were to move in any different direction. So we, for example, so right now, the three buses that we currently have budgeted funds in the current budget for, that, the funds for that are still, are paused as well. So it means that, but even with that, we're moving forward with ordering those vehicles. The bus dealer is ordering, but it's contingent on the fact that, number one, town meeting would have to approve the grant fund, sorry, the buses as part of that warrant, as well as if we don't have the grant funding, we won't be able to move forward. But we're assuming that things may, there may be a window where we have an opening and things can move forward. So we're continuing to trek forward just in case. We're hoping that by the time we get to town meeting, we'll have better information and be able to say, okay, yes, we're going this way or not. So first of all, the bus, those three buses have been ordered by the Vivo, who is the dealership, and the manufacturer has started the process. But it's still contingent on town meeting and on the grant funding. That's one. In terms of construction for the depot, for the infrastructure, if it is that everything goes smoothly and we do get the funding, we should have the infrastructure in place by October, the fall time. So we have to keep on moving forward in terms of the infrastructure construction. So Highland Capital, Highland Electric, sorry, they're bearing some of that risk in terms of moving forward, but we don't know exactly where it's going to fall. For the 10 buses, that one seems less likely. But we're moving forward. We've gotten feedback from John Cofflin on the agreement so far. I am going to be giving those comments back to Highland Electric. And then we'll hopefully, at that point in time, if there's a window that opens up, we'll continue to move forward. If not, we do have the ability to continue as is right now in terms of the diesel buses. But I know that this is a priority for constituents in terms of, we've gotten a lot of feedback and emails and a lot of the green communities, a lot of, all of the different green communities in town. They've really pushed for this. And we're trying to do our best in terms of what we have available to us.
Great. Thank you for the update. All right. So 8.4, any surplus? I didn't see anything in the packet. Okay. So we're going to move over to item nine, Subcommittee and Project Reports and Warrants Signed. Matt?
Not much. East School Council meeting was supposed to be today, but it was canceled. So the next one will take place on March 10th. Half has their next meeting tomorrow night.
Thursday at 5:00, we are doing the Educational Programming Subcommittee where we will go over the middle-of-the-year data. Woo-hoo.
You got to stop making that Subcommittee sound so.
I know.
Everyone's going to be one of the one of next year. You know, you're like fighting to get on the.
If you're nice, we might also talk about the community service requirements and feedback we got from that, so.
All right, okay. Carrie?
The middle school council is meeting on February 24th.
Michelle?
High school council is meeting on Wednesday, and that community service is actually going to be on the agenda as well. Just want to check with folks. The Student Advisory Committee meeting is tomorrow night at 7:30. Carrie and I were going to join. It's not a posted meeting, but there is one, if anybody has time, you can just let me know. I think everyone had other meetings that night and couldn't attend. But if you do want to attend, let me know. And I'm, I'll send you the Zoom link.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll report back.
Ally?
Policies meeting on the 24th and probably part of graduation requirements we'll also be discussing. Everybody's going to be discussed everywhere, as well as a variety of other topics.
Jen?
No, nothing.
And I don't have anything either. All right, so item 10, other items that may not be reasonably known within 48 hours. Does anybody have anything? Okay. Before I take a motion to adjourn, sorry, I just want to make sure. Nope, Brian's not there. Okay. So item 11, adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purposes of, to approve minutes from the executive session held on January 27, 2025, as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation and act as appropriate. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, the chair so declares.
And so declare. Second. All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We're adjourned.